Call the meeting room to order for the Reno County Board of Zoning Appeals. On this day, it's October 17th. Staff, will you please call the roll?
Shortfeger?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Gertson?
Here. Welcome, everyone. We've got, we'll start with the Board of Zoning Appeals tonight, and then we'll, if we're done with that business, we'll adjourn and start up the Planning Commission portion. Just for heads up. In your packets, I trust you've had a chance to review the minutes from the July 18 Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor of approval of the July 18 BZA minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Board of Zoning Appeals, or BZA, in an orderly manner, the BZA will follow the fact-finding procedure which is outlined in the handout on each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. All decisions by the BZA are final. Decisions may be appealed to the District Court within 30 days of the decision. If a decision is made tonight, that that decision will be based upon the record of information presented to the BZA. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2024-13, a request by William Jr. and Teresa Delgado for a special exception from the Reno County zoning regulations to construct a 59-by-80-foot residential accessory building and permit a total of 6,145 square feet of accessory buildings. The total square footage of all accessory buildings exceeded the 2,000-square-foot maximum permitted on a parcel less than 2.0 acres in size. The property is zone R-1 Rural Residential District and R-2 Suburban Residential District and located at 715 East 56th Avenue. Have any of the BZA members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any of the BZA members have conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to you at the discretion of the Chair. The BZA members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
Hello. Hi. Sorry, guys, I've never done this before. My name's William Delgado. I'm just, I mean, the reason for this petition or my request is I own a car dealership in Wichita, Kansas. This isn't going to be used for business. This property is going to be used to store my personal vehicles. I'm a collector of cars, antique cars. I'm actually a pastor at Church of New Wine here at the corner of 9th and Maple. This is just a hobby that I have, and I don't have enough space to store my personal vehicles. I mean, that's the reason why we're asking for this building and the request that you guys enabled me to put this up. Was there anything else I needed to say? There is a correction to this paperwork here. It should be 54 by 80, not 59 by 80. I don't know if that makes any difference to you guys, but, you know, it is quite a bit of difference in size. So I just pray that you guys would approve it and enable me to keep collecting what I like, so you guys like it, too. So, thanks, guys.
Do any of the board members have any questions for the applicant? Well, now, hear from the staff.
Mark, if I ask the county planner, so to clarify, this board is permitted to go less than what was advertised in the paper and sent to the property. You just can't go greater than a 59 by 80, so if Mr. Delgado wants to do now a 54 by 80, that is perfectly acceptable within your realm of being able to approve something like that. So this is a request to exceed that 2,000-square-foot limit. We're located on 56th Avenue, just a little bit east of Plum. Plum is on the west side of the map that is shown. The reason we have two zoning districts with this property is recently Mr. Delgado had purchased some additional acreage to the east of where his old battery was. The area he purchased was over in this area of his property. Not too much land here, but it was something that he wanted to add now that we know, you know, probably for the construction of his building is why he wanted to do that. It just so happens that that property surrounding his is zone R1. His original parcel is zone R2. So when he purchased that and added that to his existing property, it became two zoning districts. There's really no issues in that sense of having a dual zoning on your property. The only thing is, like I alluded to in my staff report, is that on the east side, since that's going to be R1, he's going to have a 10-foot setback. If the building would have been located on the west side of his property, then it'd be an 8-foot setback. So you're just talking about a 2-foot difference. The south side property, it's still the same setback and everything, so there's no issues with that. But as stated in the staff report, when you are over 2 acres in size, you're permitted up to 5,000 square feet of accessory building. And so looking at his total square footage, even if he would have purchased a little bit more land and gotten above that 2-acre minimum with a total of 6,145 square feet that we now know is out there, he still would have needed this special exception because I had discussed that with them previously about possibly purchasing some, a little bit more land, and then we would have to go through this process. But now that we know the total square footage of all the buildings, fortunately, this process is still going to be required regardless of the acreage. So this is the site plan that was submitted. You can see the location of the building, which would be in the southeast corner, near the house. House is right here. The new building would be going right in there. He's got some other additional buildings that are on that property currently. The total square, this whole acreage right now is 1.8, 1.817 acres here. I do have some pictures of the area to kind of help get you oriented. This is taken from February of this year, showing the existing property prior to him purchasing. This would be the area of land over here that he recently purchased, so his property line now is over a bit further to the east. You can kind of see what the parcel used to look like. A little bit closer, close-up view of the property, looking to the north. This is again from February of this year. And again, the land to the east is now owned by him. You can see the additional buildings that are up here. He didn't really have probably a lot of room to build that size building. This would be a close-up view of the property, looking back to the west. You can see the additional land that he purchased would be down in this area. And the building would probably, my guess, would be straddling both of those property lines right there. This is another close-up view. This would be looking to the south. I just took it from about every angle. And then this is one looking back to the east with 56th Avenue over here. This is a ground shot of where the shed would be located. I believe that's all that I have for the pictures. In your packet, you will see that there was a letter written from an attorney that represents a property owner to the east. I believe it was property number 10. They had some concerns about the size of the building being compatible with the area out there, and you saw that the owner of that property, through their attorney, had some requests from Mr. Delgado about the location of that building. I think the concerns that he had are typical conditions of approval that we usually place on these types of requests, so I didn't see anything really out of the ordinary. The one exception being that he wanted to make sure that the building was located in the spot that is shown on the site plan. Sometimes we, as a board, will give people flexibility to move that building, you know, anywhere really on the property so long as it meets our separate requirements. And the request from the attorney and that owner was that the building be located as shown on the site plan. And so it is a fairly large building. It is a little bit smaller now than what was originally requested, but still a fairly large building for that size of a parcel. But in reviewing that, staff has recommended approval of that request. And I did include the three conditions of approval that we typically have. I think, given the fact now that it's going to be a 54-by-80-foot building, my condition number one still said it's for a building not to exceed 59 by 80, so I still believe that that's appropriate. You can leave that condition in there if you wanted to. The accessory building can't be used for commercial or industrial purposes. As you heard now, it's going to be for his personal car collection. And then, of course, the accessory building cannot be used as a single-family dwelling except if authorized by these regulations. So with that, I would conclude my presentation, and stand for any questions on the board.
How does the garage apartment, I mean, I think of that as an accessory building, but apparently it's not. So what is that considered?
Well, I think it's an accessory building because it's not a principal structure. I was, yeah, a little surprised when I saw that on the survey through the boundary adjustment application here. You are allowed to have accessory dwelling units on your property. I don't know how long that has been in place. Maybe that's something that the owner could answer you on that. But accessory dwelling units are permitted in our regulations, meeting the guidelines of, usually it's no full kitchen can be allowed in those apartments. But that's something that was pre-existing.
So that was one of the two structures you used in your calculation of total square feet?
Correct. Yes. Yes.
And Mark, do you know, is the new facility going to be equipped with a water supply and a sewer system?
I do not know that. If it is, they would just use their existing well and their existing wastewater system. I have not heard that they want to put a separate system in there. I would assume that they did have a bathroom in it, they would just hook into their existing system.
If that, if the proposed building straddles the, he owns both parcels, but it's going to straddle a border. Is that an issue in your mind?
It would not be an issue, but in this particular case, when he purchased that, a new legal description was written, and so that line is really not there anymore. Part of the boundary adjustment process was to write a brand-new legal description, and so...
So there aren't two parcels?
It's not two parcels. Yeah, it's only, yeah, if you look at, if you look at this, this was mapped with that additional land, you know, in there. And so, yeah, so they took that legal description that was written for the boundary adjustment, incorporated into his different, his existing parcel, excuse me, and then wrote a brand-new legal, filed that, and so that's what got mapped. So, yeah, so it's not an issue. But even if it was, if it was a separate parcel, it would not be a concern.
Since you have both, since the landowner is the same on both.
Since the landowner is the same, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, he wouldn't be able to, he wouldn't be able to sell that building off separately.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Mark, in the comments, it indicates that there's not going to be a driveway for the new structure. How is it getting access?
Through the existing driveway.
Is that, it will connect to that existing driveway over there, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
He could probably answer how he's going to get, yeah, he's going to access that.
Yeah.
He's not putting a new driveway in on 56th, so the assumption is, you know, he'll connect with his existing driveway out there.
And that's not going to affect the septic system that's out there?
No. No. I had environmental review, and that was one question I saw in their comments.
I saw that there was something mentioned. I didn't know if there was, if there was another access path that I had figured out.
That was their concern, given the fact that we've got a 1.8-acre parcel right now, and so they were concerned about any kind of driveway that would be potentially getting close to the wastewater system, and so that was all confirmed. And so environmental is good with the request.
Hey, did the survey page show where the wastewater system was? I saw a couple marks.
Yeah, it should have.
Couple manholes. Is that WW down there?
Yeah. Water well and manhole, yeah. Like, if it should be like manhole.
Okay, so those are the manholes for the sewer system, then? Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case, you may have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium one at a time and state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted to address the BZA one time from the podium. Audience members are permitted only one time at the podium. In the interest of time, if you agree with the comments previously made by other members, please don't, other audience members, please don't repeat the comments. Simply state you agree with the previous comments and then present new information. Statements and questions should only be directed to the BZA, not the applicant or staff. The BZA may choose not to answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application can be asked to the BZA and answered by the applicant or staff during the rebuttal phase of the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Moving right on. Do you have any additional statements? Okay, we might have a few questions the way it sounded.
I would have a question for the applicant.
Okay. Do you want to step up to the podium right away?
Can you give us a little insight on your car collection? How, I mean, is that a coming and going collection? Or how frequently do you add to that or sell?
I haven't sold one of my collections yet, as of yet. I've been collecting for about 14 years. So, I mean, anything that I take home and I collect, I keep. So, I mean, I've got 38 Chevys. I've got 87 Monte Carlos with less than 10,000 miles on them, 95 GTRs. I mean, so, I mean, these are, these are cars that you can't find, so...
No wonder you need a big shit.
Ah, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a hobby I picked up. I also have 17 children, and I plan to leave one car for each one of them when I pass away. So that's my vision and my plan.
I have another question. I was out there this morning just to get an idea of the neighborhood, and I saw that, I think there were two trucks there, high lift or, you know, bucket trucks?
Yeah.
And then I saw them again in the photograph. Does that, do you have a business that uses those, or?
My son just recently moved here from Nebraska. I mean, relocated. So he's living in an apartment right now. He's looking to buy a house. Those are actually his vehicles. They're not mine.
Okay.
So I just let him park them there.
We recently had a case where we, it's much the same scenario, where we had an applicant come in and say, yep, I want to build a big building, and it's for my own personal use, and it ended up being commercial use in the endgame. It was, it seemed to be somewhat of a painful experience. And just want to make sure, this is part of our, part of what we do, is vetting out to ensure that there's not going to be a commercial use in there, or if there will be, you understand that you have to go back through, Mark, for a conditional use permit process. So just want to make sure you understand that before we make a decision.
Yes. Yes, sir. And can I, can I show you guys? I know you guys had a concern with the septic. You had a question about that?
Yeah.
We had to add, when we purchased this, we had to add an oversized septic system, the one that was there. And our actual runoff is back here. So it's totally opposite of the structure. And just so you guys know that. Also, there's two wells on this property. There's one here for our personal water, and then there's another one for irrigation. We don't plan on, at this time, we don't plan on doing anything in that building as it won't be something, a livable structure or anything like that. Like I said, it's just going to be to store cars. So we will hopefully have electricity there, but that's probably about it.
And that system's fairly new? You said you had...
Probably brand-new. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, yeah, I know that's a major concern. You know, you don't want to make, mess that up.
Yeah.
I'm a car collector to some degree. Are you going to put any heat in there to take care of them cars?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll put a couple mini splits in there. That's about it. That's why we only need electricity out there.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Staff, do you have any additional comments?
I have no additional comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does the BZA have any further questions for applicant or staff? The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of a special exception must be based on the public hearing record of information, and in its opinion, as a matter of fact, such special exception will not adversely affect the uses of adjacent and neighboring properties. This is time for the BZA to discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Any other further discussion?
Yes, Mark. The number of 59 feet versus 54 feet, the final record will be corrected to state as actual.
I want to see how the motion was, the recommended motion was written. They were a building not to...
Yeah. It's allowing a building of 59 by 80 in size. But they didn't say anything about...
It does have that covered.
You could add the words not to exceed 59 by 80, or if you want, you can change your motion to what Mr. Delgado requested.
Well, we have a total square footage of, or a square foot total accessory building.
Yeah.
So do we need to change that?
The total was based off the 59 by 80, so something less than that, so you don't necessarily need to change that.
Okay, just the not to.
I mean, I, you know, I think, you know, the board, if you're so inclined to approve, I think you could just leave it as is. And like I said in my opening statements, he can apply for a building less than that. You'd be granting approval for a 59 by 80 if he wants to, but if he doesn't want that and he wants something less, he's still permitted to apply for something less, and so you'd still be covered by doing the 59 by 80 if you'd like.
Any further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the case number 2024-13, the request for William Delgado requesting a special exception from the Reno County zoning regulations to permit a total square foot, square footage of all accessory buildings in the parcel to exceed 2,000 square feet limited in the R1 Rural Residential District and R2 Suburban Residential District at 715 East 56th Avenue will be approved, allowing the building of 59 by 80 feet in size for a total of 6,154 feet of total accessory building square footage as requested in the application and subject to the conditions listed above based upon the reasons stated in the staff report and as heard in this public hearing.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Number nine, staff, please call the roll.
Shortfeger?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gertson?
Yes.
Build that building.
There you go. I bless you. Appreciate you.
Thanks for going through the process. We appreciate it.
Thanks again, guys. Bless you, guys.
Okay. Is there any other business to be brought before the BZA? Staff?
I have nothing. The board...
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I didn't want to...
Whoop, back up.
This is like a really goofy question. Not really a question, but somewhere here it's referenced solar collectors, and I thought we had gotten rid of that.
But that might be on the planning commission side of things and not on the BZA. We got two, we have, we've got two pieces of business tonight. So that'll probably fall under the planning commission.
So we haven't really got rid of this yet?
No, that's not... We got to, we got to open up the planning commission side of it.
It's trivial, but...
I'll answer your question in a few minutes.
We got you covered. We won't go without it.
I move to adjourn the BZA.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning the October 17 BZA, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We call the October 17 Planning Commission to order. Now we go, Garth. Now we're, now we're...
What about the solar collector?
Well, we're going to get to that in a little bit. Patience. Oh, goodness. All right, guys. Let's, in your packet, there was some, there were the minutes from the September 9, 19. Oops, sorry, roll call. Sorry, I was going right on fast. Got me all fluttered.
Shortfeger?
Yes.
Strand?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Macklin? Here.
Martin?
Here.
Gertson?
Here.
In your packet, there were minutes from the September 19 meeting. Trust you've all had a chance to review them. Chair will entertain a motion on those meetings, on those minutes.
Chair, I move for approval of minutes as submitted.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor of approval of the September 19 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. The Kansas Supreme Court has defined a rezone where a conditional use permit public hearing is a quasi-judicial function. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Planning Commission in an orderly manner, the Planning Commission will follow the fact-finding procedure which is outlined in the handout on each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the Planning Commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, a public hearing is considered incomplete only if the Planning Commission failed to follow procedural guidelines which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest, or if the Planning Commission failed to allow an interesting party to, an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the Planning Commission recommendation. The Planning Commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the Planning Commission at its public hearing along with the report and recommendation of the county planner, letters, informal petition, and other information constituting the record of proceedings provided to the Planning Commission before and during the public hearing. If the Planning Commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, the case will be presented to the county commissioners at their next available meeting after the protest period expires. Contact planning staff or visit the website for county commissioner agenda items. Any party who wishes to require the county commissioners decide this case by supermajority vote may file a protest petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of Reno County Clerk, 125 West 1st Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, within 14 days following the decision by the Planning Commission. The form is on the Reno County website, Planning Department webpage. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2024-12, a request by William and Mary Ritzdorff, revocable... William and Mary Ritzdorf, revocable trust in the Karandera Living Trust and Randall and Pamela Smith to vacate all of that portion of North Severance Street lying adjacent to Reserve A, Block C, Lot 8, Block C, and Lot 8, Block A in Yuccadune subdivision. Have any of the planning commissioners had any outside contact regarding this case?
No.
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 Do any of the planning commissioners have conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Bill Ritzdorf. Uh, my wife and I are married, live at 806 East 74th in the Yuccadunes, we're on the far east end of the Yuccadunes, northeast corner. The area that I live on has a, kind of an angle on the south edge, and my laterals and my septic tank are actually right here on this side of the driveway. And we started to have a little bit of seepage on that lateral line, and Darcy had come out, we had dug three test holes to try to, so we could put new laterals in and fix that system. We dug two holes right there along the south property line, and then we also dug one on the east side of trees over here. And this is the one that came up as the most favorable place to put the laterals. The only issue is with Severance Street where it is, it gives me about a 10-foot section, so my laterals are going to have to be 70 or 80, 90 foot long and only too wide. So if we could vacate that, I can make a better lateral field and more appropriate for what we need. It's just me and my wife there, but it is a three-bedroom home with three baths. So, uh, it is property that we have already, we basically mow all of it and take care of it due to the fire that we had out there in Paganico a while back, and we had it come right down along there, so we have been mowing that and keeping it cut down for that purpose. And I know Dr. Smith there on the south end does the same thing. I know, uh, Mark Dara, the middle section there, he has actually talked about clearing part of that too for that same purpose, because of all the cedar trees and stuff that's in there. So for me, it kind of serves a dual purpose, I'm already keeping it clean, but it's also going to make me, give me the ability to put a better lateral line in there. And I have already, if you see these trees right here, I've already taken out a big section of these trees to allow me to go for my septic, which is right here, over to that new lateral field. And this section right here, there was about a 10-foot area there where I could put laterals, but I'm in that same boat where I only have about a 10-foot wide area, so I'm kind of boxed in there a little bit.
Does board have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Several months ago, this board may recall that we entertained another road vacation, uh, right in this same line up at 82nd Avenue, that was actually just an easement, it wasn't really a platted road like it is in this case. Well, this is the next segment south of there, this is in Yuccadunes subdivision, which is up at 74th, 75th and Plum Street. What we're looking at vacating is highlighted in red, now it's not the greatest picture in the world, but you do have a copy of that plat in your packet, I do believe. And this part of Severance Street is planted as 30 foot, 35 foot, excuse me, wide, is not platted on the other side, and so it's essentially a 35-foot strip of land. It was put in place with the idea and the thinking that once the other side of that land gets developed, they would plat the other 35 foot, you would have a 70-foot wide road. Well, that has not happened, nor do I believe that that will ever happen, and so Mr. Ritzdorf approached me with his concern that you heard here tonight about vacating that. This is that formal process to go about vacating a road right of way. There are three property owners involved with, with this vacation here, and so he has put forth that application here. I'm going to kind of go through some slides to kind of show you what that road looks like today, and I've got some close-ups of that, but as you can see from this photo here, the road doesn't go north and the road doesn't go south. 69th Avenue is further on down, I have a wider view of that here, so you can see a road vacation is up there on the top, 69th Avenue is right here, that'd be the next, next potential road other than 71st that it could connect to. There's not road right of way there anywhere for that road to go and connect to, nor is there any road to the north for it to connect to either, so it's just sitting out there in, in Yuccadunes, and it's, it's becoming a hindrance for him to be able to install a wastewater system. This is a little bit closer view, you can kind of see that it's, it's got a lot of trees in there, and also there are some ponds on the other people's property, whereas if there was ever any indication that we wanted to put a 70-foot wide road in, there would be some issues with those ponds, obviously, and acquiring the other 35 foot. This is another view, this is from 2024, again, in February, that's Mr. Ritzdorf's property right there that's highlighted in blue, and you can see that the other property is right here, and then the third property is down here, you can see the road just dead end, it's right there at the edge of the subdivision. Little bit closer view, you can see what he's been talking about, where he's been kind of maintaining that, but there's no semblance of a road, there's no way for anybody to use Severance Street at all. This is the next property further to the south of him. See all the cedar trees that are within that road right of way right now? And then lastly, there's the, the third property there, again, his pond is in that area along with the pond on the other side of the road, plus the amount of cedar trees that are in there. So, to formally vacate a road right of way, this board needs to review and answer three questions, and those questions are that proper notice was provided to the public, the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. In my staff report, you will see my discussion of those three, three topics here. After review of that, then staff has recommended approval of this road vacation, finding that proper notice was provided, the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. With that, I would conclude my presentation, is there any questions?
Mark, it looks like 73rd terminates where the Severance Street right of way is?
73rd does terminate, yes.
Is there any, I mean, we're not hurt, I mean, I, I can't see any issue in vacating this, but is there any reason for us to keep that open because of that?
Potentially a little bit of a reason, uh, number one being that his driveway is in a portion of that, of that road out there, I'm not sure if it goes on to the north side of the road, so there could be, you know, an issue, because if you vacate it, usually one half is going to go to this property, and then the other half would go to, to him, so there could be that issue. And also, if you look at, um, you know, at Evergy's map there, there could be an issue because they've got utilities that are, that are up there, and so.
As far as vaca.
Right through here.
Vacating this Severance, this stretch of 7th Street, it's not going to affect that 73rd.
It will not affect 73rd, I mean, that'll just continue to be what it is right now, a right of way, you know, we have to look at that, you know, we could vacate a portion of it, right now it's not really hurting anything, just being an open, open road like it is.
So we're vacating it all the way down to the south property line of that Smith?
Correct.
Okay.
The entire.
The entire.
Road within the plat that you see here, yep. So, this one's Mr. Ritzdorf's property, and the next property, and then the third property right there, and that's, that's the full extent of Severance, Severance Street.
So is there, are there any other portions of Severance Street in that stretch?
Not in that stretch, I don't believe.
Between 69th and 95th, like, you know, like we vacated like an 82nd Street?
Going north, no, I don't, no, no, I think that this will take care of.
It'll clean that up.
It'll clean that up finally, yeah. And it just so happens, yeah, it's along that same stretch of road that we looked at several months ago, yeah, that it worked out that way and stuff, because if you recall, that was probably part of my presentation at that time, that the next available slot for that road to connect to was Severance Street right there, but that's only a half road, and then here we are several months later, looking at getting rid of that now.
Okay.
As I understand it, Park, it was originally identified as a road right of way and easement, but it was never platted that way?
No, it's, it's, it's a platted road right of way that was never constructed, but it was only a half road. The intent and the thinking back in the day was that we're going to plat this subdivision, as I said, like in 1980, it was recorded, and then when this land gets platted, then the subdivision plat would plat the other 35 foot of that road, making it a 70-foot wide right of way. Those pieces of land were never platted into a subdivision, so now we're left with a half road, if you will, that's, is of no use to anybody.
Kind of like we have a plan.
And this does not change his legal description or his property taxes or?
It would change the legal description in the sense that, you know, he's going to acquire that, that land, yeah, yeah. Taxes, I, you know, I don't do taxes, but you know, it have minimal effect on the.
Yes, increase.
Yeah, I mean, minimal, I would say, yeah.
Land square footage.
Yeah, yeah. What it will do, what it does do in this sense is it allows him to be able to put his wastewater system in, in that area. It allows him to utilize this extra 35 foot, as you heard him say, that now he doesn't have to have 70, 80 foot long laterals, he can, he can reduce the size of that. And it also prevents, you know, somebody from constructing a road down there. It'd be a lot of work in that sense to be able to construct a, a road as you, as you may understand, you know, with that, but just formally does away with that potential.
That 35 foot would now become his private property. Wouldn't he, doesn't he already own it, it's just there, that road easement is there?
He owns it, it's road right of way, so he doesn't pay taxes on it, and so he's. It's platted, so he doesn't own it, it's dedicated to the public, unlike a section, unlike a section of my, like, maybe where you live, if you live on a section line, you own to the center of the road, but you don't, you don't pay taxes on that, but you don't, you don't, you can't do anything with it. Here, when you plat land, that road right of way is dedicated to the public, so you don't, you don't own that, and you don't pay taxes on it either, right?
Okay.
You know, like, like down here, like on this, this is a platted right of way, they don't own that, they may be utilizing it here a little bit, you know, but they don't own it, nor do they pay taxes on that. And so when we vacate that, then that land's got to be added to the tax, so it'll be part of his, his property, and so I would say it'd be minimal taxing piece of anything with that.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like there's anyone in the audience to, to have any comments.
I think you just know for the record that there's nobody in the audience present for the record.
Does the applicant wish to make any additional statements? Anything more to say? Okay.
Unless you have questions for me.
All right. Staff, do you have any, any other statements?
I do not.
Commission, have any further questions for the applicant or staff? This public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of a conditional use permit or rezone must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found on the, on the audience chairs. At this time, the planning commission can discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Is there any further questions we need? Any further discussion? If there is none, chair will call, will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that case number 2024-12, the request by William Ritzdorf, Karandera, and Randall Smith requesting all of North Severance Street described as lying adjacent to Reserve Area A, Block C, Lot 8, Block C and Lot 8, Block A be vacated as described in the legal description and petition, finding that proper notice has been given, the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by the vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered.
I'll second that. Been moved in second, is there any, any discussion on that motion?
Logical, logical way of moving forward.
Yes, it is cleaning things up, for sure. Any other comments, discussion? Staff, will you please call the roll?
Shortfeger?
Yes.
Stran?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gertson?
Yes.
Severance is vacated.
Thank you much.
On his way.
Appreciate it, tell it away anyhow.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next item of business, looks like we have solar on our mind. Staff, if you want to give us a recap of what you experienced.
Well, I didn't have much in your packet, much explanation due to the timing of needing to get the packet out to the, to the board and stuff, but I think staff's here to kind of help you out a little bit here, so if you haven't heard, on October 9th, the county commissioners did approve the private solar text amendments that we did, and to answer Commissioner Stran's question, yes, the word or term solar collectors is no longer in the regulations, but not formally yet. I, I still need to have the resolution back that adopted the text amendments and get that published, but in addition to that, when I made copies of that article in there, it was prior to that text amendment actually being formally adopted, so that's why you still see that term in there. So, private solar regulations are essentially adopted, I've got some paperwork I have to do to formalize that, once I get all that done, make the changes to the regulations, I will provide you a new copy of Article 15 with those changes in there. With, with regards to now the commercial solar, that text amendment was not adopted, and essentially that text amendment was referred back to the planning commission, and so that is the topic of letter, letter B on our agenda today. The county commissioners discussed your recommendation of not prohibiting commercial solar, and they decided to refer that question back to this board for an answer, and they would like for you to consider a prohibition of commercial solar only in the watershed. And so that is, that is the question before this board.
And that's the watershed only in the zoned area?
Only in the zoned area, so, so I've, I've got several different options for this board, and I can run through that, or if you have questions for me right now. How this board wants to handle it.
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
So, okay, so, so they were requesting that you consider prohibiting commercial solar in the North Fork, the Neskoy River watershed only in the zoned areas. I want to stress that we're only considering the zoned area of the county right now, we're not discussing anything to do with the unzoned area, that'll come at a later time, maybe, okay? With the request, the planning commission would have really three options. You could recommend approval of the county commissioners' request to prohibit commercial solar in the watershed in the zone area of the county. Now, since the watershed is not really a straight line, within that recommendation to prohibit solar in the watershed, you have additional, three options that I've come up with. You can determine that boundary tonight, okay? You can give us the background, we, we need to have some, some legal. You can give us the boundary. We, we need to have some, some legal description, some boundary of what the watershed is through roads, or section lines, or half-section lines. So you can do that. You could request staff to draw that proposed boundary, and then bring that back before this board next month, which we were, we can do. We can draw a proposed boundary of, show you where the watershed is, show you where maybe a prohibition line could lie. Or you could just let staff draw that line. You can make a recommendation to agree with the county commissioners, and staff can draw that line, and we can present that to the county commissioners without your review. So, you know, we can bring you the prohibition line, and you can review it and approve of that, if you would like, or you can let staff do that. So that's, that's the first option. The second option would be to recommend to not prohibit commercial solar in the watershed. This would go along with really your original recommendation to not prohibit commercial solar in the zoned area. So you could, tonight, you can make that recommendation and say, "We don't agree with prohibiting commercial solar in the watershed." And then that recommendation would, would be returned to the county commissioners. Third option is you could really take no action if you don't want to. You don't have to decide. Now, if you take no action, that is going to be the same as submitting your original recommendation of not prohibiting commercial solar in the zoned area. And so, three options. You, you can recommend prohibiting it in the watershed, or you can recommend to not prohibit it, or you can take no action on that. Whatever action you would take, you know, it would be sent back up to the county commissioners, and they can approve or deny your recommendation by just a, a simple majority vote at that point, so. I can go over that again. I'm sure there's probably questions or.
Let me see if I can get some more facts. It might seem to me like, are we talking about just the, the blue watershed area, or are we talking about all the zoned area?
So what, what I provided you in your packet was a, a, a simple copy of what the watershed is in the zoned area of the county. So to answer your question, we're only talking about prohibition in the watershed area. That was the question the county commissioners wanted this board to consider. You told the commissioner you did not want to prohibit it in the zoned area of the county. They discussed that. Now they want to know, well, would this board consider prohibiting solar within the watershed?
And just thinking out loud, I assume there's, in that watershed area, particularly around the lake, there are some pretty big structures in there for storage boats and marine activities that we would be then. If we, if we agreed to prohibit it there, that means that those owners of those buildings or those docks and things of that sort, they couldn't have put in any solar on the roof.
This is commercial?
Yeah, no, no. We're, we're just talking about the large commercial farms. That we're not talking about the private. So to use your example, they could still come in and put solar panels on their building. That would still be something that would be permitted. We're talking about the large, large-scale commercial farms that are greater than 10 acres, greater than 2 megawatts. That's what.
In other words, if.
That's what they're wanting us to consider.
Co-op wanted to put facilities in there.
Yeah.
They're saying you can't put it in that watershed area.
Yeah, if Cedric County Co-op, or if Ark Valley has territory in that area of the lake, and they want to put a limited scale, they can still make application for that conditional use permit in the watershed. This is something that's greater than 10 acres, greater than 2 megawatt.
And we're continuing to reestablish some things in my mind.
Yes.
It seems to me like you had some co-op or somebody that was talking to you about, "We'd like to put in a, a commercial facility somewhere in the, in the, in the zoned area." Away from the, is that, is that still right? Do you have had some dialogue with some people that want to put in commercial in the zoned area?
Yes. That will be heard next month, actually, in November. Ark Valley's made application for a limited scale, and that public hearing is scheduled for November 21st.
And it sounds like also, your interpretation of the county commissioners are, are separating the difference between zoned area and watershed zoned area?
Yes, yes.
I'm asking you to tell me, what, what's the opinion of the commissioners going to be for a commercial facility in the zoned area of the county, other than the watershed? Maybe you don't know, and if so, just say, "I don't know." And then maybe you can give me.
No, so what, what they're, what they wanted you to consider was to prohibit it within the watershed of the zoned area of the county and create regulations for the rest of the zoned area of the county for commercial solar. So that is not saying they're going to prohibit it. And they didn't vote that they was going to allow, but they want regulations created for so.
They haven't voted on whether to prohibit it in the zoned area entirely enough. But number three on our agenda is based off of their direction, and that was the second directive they gave at the meeting, was to begin or continue the development of commercial regulations. That's not to say that they're going to adopt that or, or not. That's just saying they want to see what the regulations are.
And the first part you were talking about is, since the watershed area is not a straight line, like all these others are straight lines, you would, if, if we did something, you'd need to turn that into straight lines.
What I suggested to the board of county commissioners, if this happens, that we make straight lines by section lines, or I looked at it any closer, probably the tightest would be per quarter section lines to, to try to go around that round area. I, I wish that the zoned area, that we would clean that up someday, and take a public hearing and square that all up. But until then, we would probably make straight lines down to quarter sections to stay, try to stay as close to that as we could. Only in the zoned area. And we have to be careful about that in the unzoned area, because we cannot prohibit anything in the unzoned area yet. You do not have, you cannot do that. This board cannot do that. So we're just talking about this part.
Yeah, yeah.
So looking at this watershed map, the very far southeastern corner of the county, those, those properties drain into the Nenasko, but don't they drain into the Nenasko downstream of the dam? Are, are we?
Yes, that's, yeah, that is the Nenasko River watershed.
That is the Nenasko.
That's just identifying the watershed, yes.
Okay, so not everything in the blue hatched area necessarily drains into Cheney Lake?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Everybody calls it the Cheney watershed. It's a Nenasko River watershed, is what it is.
Yeah, like I say, this, this happened Wednesday, and, and your packet had to get out the next day. So I apologize for the, really the lack of information, so this board can. Certainly now you have a little bit more information. You can certainly do with it what you want, if you want to think about this and come back next month, or.
Knowing how we did, how we, when we created the regulations for the, for the wind conversion, we allowed for a three-mile buffer, if you want to call it that, around Cheney Reservoir. That was in, that was written in the regulations. So my, of course, at that point, those are, that's, they are where they are right now. My point of that comment is, is I believe we can write that very same thing into our regulations, and we don't really need to make a separate action for the watershed itself in this, in the zoned area of the county. That's all we got to look at. I believe we can make, we can make, we can write that into our regulations and not have a separate, separate action. That's my, that's my opinion.
Your suggestion is to treat solar like we do wind for this.
Yeah, give it a, yeah, and I, I, I mean, we're, we'll get to that point, but I, my, we'll determine what that looks like when we get to, when we get to visit, discussing the regulations. My point is, is I, I don't think we need to make a separate action on that Nenasko watershed, since we can do that within the regulations.
So it would be something like four miles to the closest half-mile line, or?
Or, or from the closest, I think we, we went by shoreline, didn't we? You remember that dawn?
Yeah.
It's been, it's been a couple, couple moments ago, but I've seen to me, we went from the, from the largest water line, the potential largest water line measured from there, out from that. And it was, I think it was, give or take, three miles.
But we, still, I would suggest to make it on some kind of straight lines and not.
For sure. Well, I, I think we can write that into the regulations though, can't we? Or do you want something different?
No, you can write that. I just want to let you know that, so that's not, so you're not doing what was asked, what's requested of you, which is fine. You don't have to. Because if, let's say if you prohibit it three miles away from the lake. So part of the watershed that is shown is from two miles to four miles. So you're going to be in and out of that. So there's a little bit different than what you're saying, which is fine, than what the watershed indicates.
But you want some definition. Bottom line, you're wanting, you're wanting some definition on a straight line.
But yeah, what, I think whatever you do, I think to, these circles are a nightmare. I think we need to.
Yeah.
Can you imagine the surveyor going out there if there was a project and trying to figure that out? How is that handled on the, I'm assuming to the west, where the round is, that's unzoned?
Right.
So, and you said we can't encroach on the unzoned?
You can't.
So how did, how do you get around the curvature?
Well, right now, you're just making a decision on the zoned area of the county. So this other part out here that's butting up against the unzone, you're not dealing with that right now.
So whatever definition we write has to, can't include anything outside the bubble.
No, just, just within the zone.
Right.
That's all this is about tonight.
Well, that makes it a little easier.
Yeah.
And it seems to me like if we're going to do something like that, we need to be concerned about what we call it. It's got to be Cheney Lake and not the Nenasko watershed area, because it goes on forever.
Well, this, you know, I, I struggle with this too. It's, it's the, it's the Nenasko watershed, but you know, Nenasko, North Fork and Nenasko runs into the lake and runs out of the lake. The lake is just a pool of what the Nenasko River provides. So it's still, I think, the Nenasko River watershed. And anything that runs into the lake actually runs into the Nenasko River, if you see what I'm saying. The river goes through the lake. So I don't know if I answered your question, but that, that is a struggle to comprehend that.
Only thinking about the terminology we use. If we're going to do something, we need to be relative to the lake and not relative to the watershed area, because the watershed area goes on for miles.
Well, we're only talking about the watershed with, the Nenasko River watershed within the zoned area of the county, because this whole county's watersheds everywhere. Every creek, every, all the other rivers, everything is watersheds. We're just talking about the Nenasko, North Nenasko River watershed.
But conceptually, it sounds like the guidance we were given is that we want to protect Cheney Reservoir as a drinking water source.
That's the guidance.
So when we're writing these regulations, which I, I like Russ's idea of just making this a part of the regulations we submit, our recommendations. But that's, like, ultimately our goal. We're using the watershed as a, as a stand-in, because Cheney Lake is a part of the Nenasko River. But our, our end goal is protecting Cheney Reservoir as a drinking water source. And so whether we go with a buffer or the entire watershed, I guess at some point it's just all in the details, but.
I, I told the commission that this could all be done in a couple ways. They could have done it with a four-to-one vote themselves, or this could be a part of the regulations. So when you write the regulations and you sense you prohibit it within this watershed, that's, that's just part of the regulations, and it's not allowed there, so. So yes, what you're saying is, yes, it can be part of the regulations. And I guess what you're deciding tonight is you're telling the county commission that yes, versus you're going to prohibit it within the watershed, or you're going to regulate it out of the watershed, it's the same thing, to me.
Right. Yeah, but really, we only need one action, is what I'm getting at, too. We don't need two, two sets of, of votes, if you want to call it.
You're going to make an action of whether you're going to prohibit it within the watershed or write regulations that prohibit it within the watershed or not.
But it, it sounds like we're still getting guidance to go ahead and write regulations. So we might as well just do the prohibition as a part of that. I, I think that's.
Okay, so, so item B on our agenda just says that pro, that they're, they're, they're sending it back to us to prohibit commercial solar energy in the zoned area of the county. They, they, there isn't anything referring to the, to the Nenasko watershed in that statement.
And that, I think that's what I'm trying to say, too.
So we need to decide, okay, we're not going, we're, we've, I thought we've already decided that we aren't going to prohibit.
Well, you got, period. So the way that's written, because the original text amendment was to prohibit commercial solar in the zoned area of the county. So that was the case number, that was the title, that's what was referred back. But their more specific direction is, will this board consider a prohibition in the zoned areas?
I just want to clarify that, because that, it's, it's a little, I don't want to make sure that we, yeah, Letter, Letter B on our agenda is focused on this piece of paper right here.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, and that, and I wrote it based off of what the case, case number was, but yeah, you're, and I, and that's kind of the timing of everything. I didn't get a chance to write a memo and explain all that, so yeah, so.
So.
So that's, that's the question before the board. Does this board want to prohibit commercial solar in the watershed? And if that answer is yes, then do you want to have staff provide you a map of what that would look like? Or do you want to say, "No, we, we feel like we can still write regulations that are maybe more stringent in the watershed," which is perfectly acceptable? I mean, we can have a section in there that, that defines the watershed and say, "These additional regulations would apply to this area of the county." And then we would have to write regulations that would, we'd think of it as almost like an overlay. You know, if, if it goes the way they go, we're going to have commercial solar regulations. But if you're with, if you're in the zoned area of the county and within the watershed, now you're going to have this other section of regulations that you're going to have to also abide by.
So our first question is, conceptually, do we agree with banning solar in the watershed?
That's a good question. Yeah, exactly. Yes.
I think so. But it seems reasonable, very reasonable to me, and a good way to, to move this whole subject along. And it's very defensible about protecting Cheney Lake water. And I feel like it would, would be a good move on our part, too, be agreeable to the request from the county commission.
So if that's agreeable to the majority of you, do you also agree that I will define that by at least quarter section lines or whatever, instead of this stuff that we have?
I sure don't want to do it.
Yeah, because the county. The county commission agreed that I would outline that by some sort of section, quarter section, half section lines, and not this round circle.
Shall, shall we get a motion on the table, and we can amend it as we see? You want to do that, George?
I'll, I'll put something out there.
Okay, then we'll, then we'll flesh it out. Let's get something going here, and then we can flesh it out.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the county commission to ban commercial solar in the Nenasko River watershed as indicated by the blue area on our map. solar in the Nenasko River watershed as indicated by the blue area on our map. And that the staff be, and that the staff be instructed to turn the curves into straight lines to the nearest quarter section.
Okay. Are we gonna make that a standalone motion or are we gonna have that as a part and submit that as a part of creating Article 26?
Right now, it's a standalone.
That's a standalone motion?
Yep, right now, it is standalone.
So it's been so moved, do I hear a second?
I'm not repeating it. So Marky better have taken good notes. Liz will help us with the recording. Second?
If we're gonna have a discussion, I'm, I'm still lobby that we ought to reference it to Cheney Lake and not the watershed. Because that's what we're trying to protect is Cheney Lake.
How about the Nenasko watershed that feeds Cheney Lake?
Yeah, but that's, that's big.
But within the zone.
No, in the zone area.
We're only talking about.
So you're saying about modifying Garth's motion to be the portion of the Nenasko watershed that feeds Cheney Lake?
Within the zoned area.
Within the zoned area of Reno County.
Are you okay with that?
Are you open to that modification?
Second, are you okay with that modification? Okay?
So, so some of this that's downstream from the dam.
It's still within the watershed, so it's gonna be included.
But it's not feeding Cheney.
But it's not feeding Cheney Lake.
I think if, I think the, the Nenasko watershed is the overarching.
But it's not in Reno County.
What do you mean?
What you're looking at is.
Yeah, but what's downriver.
This is, but beyond that.
Right. I think, I think the Nenasko watershed in the zoned area, what we see on the map, that's the overarching ink blot that we're looking at. And whether it says that feeds Cheney Reservoir, that's just the qualifier, it's not the fact.
Okay.
Well, then I think, because I think we're talking about two different things. It's a small amount of land, but it's, you know, half dozen or so sections probably that wouldn't be included if we're focusing on what feeds the lake, but would be included if we're focusing on the river.
I still, I still think that the Nenasko watershed map is the, is the boss. And then just saying that it, that.
Could we just say that?
That surround, that's surrounding Cheney Reservoir would probably be, maybe be a better than feeds Cheney Reservoir. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like Cheney Lake needs to be in the description, but I, I understand your concern that somebody looking at it, it would help them understand it. But the Nenasko Valley watershed is really.
The boss.
Yeah.
That's the descriptor.
So the Nenasko Valley watershed, that includes Cheney.
Cheney Reservoir, yeah. Would that be okay, Harley, to say which includes Cheney Reservoir?
Yeah, 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 I guess so. There's, there's some areas, you know, if you expect this area right over here, it's, it's in the, it doesn't feed Cheney Lake, it goes on into the other county, but gets into the river.
The Nenasko Valley watershed that in part includes Cheney Lake. In the zoned area.
We're splitting hairs a little bit.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have the right words in front of us that would make me comfortable with it. And part of it came from our associate right here.
I mean, the Nenasko River watershed encompasses Cheney Lake.
Yes.
Right.
That's, that's, it's not like Cheney Lake is not a part of it.
No, it's part of it.
That's where.
And I think Harley does have a little bit of a point where there are parts of the Nenasko watershed that don't feed Cheney Lake.
But it was included in the watershed.
But it's in the watershed.
It is in the watershed, but it doesn't affect.
It doesn't feed it, yeah.
Right, so, but if we're looking to protect a water source, then they're not really relevant in this conversation.
Yeah, but I think to make the map complete, you go, you, rather than making another map, you stay with the watershed map.
Oh, yeah, definitely Carter domain.
Yeah. The discussion was the watershed, it wasn't whether there's a parcel which feeds the lake. The discussion was the watershed.
Yeah, we've all got wrapped up in Cheney Lake, the whole discussion's about the Nenasko watershed, which in turn, the subject is it supplies water to the Cheney Lake. But there is a corner down there that doesn't, but now we're getting out of the subject of the Nenasko River watershed.
No, I think, I think we keep it as the Nenasko watershed map that surrounds Cheney Reservoir, right, which surrounds Cheney Reservoir.
I would just say within the zoned area of the county.
And then leave it at that.
And then, and that's a separate subject later on down the road, maybe.
Okay.
Don't, just within the zoned area.
So leave the lake out of it.
Well, I, I don't care.
I.
The lake is within the Nenasko River watershed.
Yeah, I, I think that's the boss.
So I don't know.
So what do you, all right, I'm looking at the motion, the motion maker.
I think that was my original motion was.
To not have the Cheney Reservoir piece in.
Yeah, I, I only referenced the Nenasko Valley watershed.
Okay.
In the zoned area.
Okay. That'd be, I, I can, I can.
Yeah, is it a valley or is it a river?
The river.
The river.
Nenasko.
Nenasko River watershed, right?
Right.
Okay.
You good with that, Gail? As a second?
Second.
Okay. So we've kind of met, we've moved around here, Mark. So striking the words surrounding, feeding, whatever with Cheney Lake, but just includes Nenasko watershed.
Yeah, what I, I think what I, I've heard now is Commissioner Strand moved to ban commercial solar in the Nenasko River watershed in the zoned area of the county and direct staff to develop that, that map.
That's fine. That, that sound fair enough? Okay, been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
I think there was another piece of his motion, that was to direct the county to give us the, to direct the staff to also establish the.
Yeah, he, he read that, the, the, establish the border, the square lines.
To the nearest quarter.
To the nearest quarter.
And this board doesn't want to see that map, are you just gonna?
No, I, I don't, I don't want to see that map.
After what happens, what's gonna happen next? If we vote on this motion and it passes, then the staff draws the lines and it, does, does that go back to the county commission or do we need to still work on our regulations or?
Yeah, that's, that's part two, but yeah, so then we'll, we'll have to have some conversations about how they want to handle that. But yeah, we'll develop the map, when we get that map done, then do they want that separately or do they want that with the, the draft regulations? But yeah, you're, if, if the motion passes and that's the direction of the board, then your job is done with that, you'll, we'll send that back up to the commissioners and they can accept that or, or not, or change it.
If they're not gonna approve that, trying to write regulations might be a waste of time.
Yeah, that was their, that was their second directive, you know, to this board. But yeah, so, but yeah, your, your job will be done with that, it'll go back up to them and then we'll see if they, if they vote on that, on that motion, if they like that or not.
I think here I called for a previous question.
Okay, staff, will you please call the roll?
Schwertfeger?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gertson?
No.
Okay, we'll send that back up to the commissioner that in due time, however they want to handle it, so.
Okay, next item of business is starting to review solar regulations. What are you waiting for?
In your packet is the last draft, I believe, that we had in December of 2023, that we were discussing and considering adopting prior to being given the directive to stop development of the regulations. Now, I don't, you know, expect a decision on this necessarily tonight. You know, I think we've heard a lot of testimony between December of 2023 and probably read a lot of stuff, and this board may want to make some modifications to, to that. I know Cedric County has developed regulations and I think Douglas County has developed regulations, and there may be other things that are not in, in this draft that maybe this board wants to put in now potentially. One thing that I would call to your attention is on the back, on page 2512, under 2610, where it, it talks about the developers agreement. If you recall, there was a pretty healthy discussion, if you will, of, of this developers agreement. And ultimately, this board, at the encouragement of staff, decided to remove a lot of the wordage in the developers agreement because that's not really your job to come up with the idea of a developers agreement. That's between the county commissioners, the applicant and with the assistance of staff here. And so the reason you see that in this draft, because it was still in the draft for the commercial at that time, prior to our adoption. You recall then we, we pivoted and started developing the limited scale, and when we developed the limited scale, the developers agreement stuff got removed from there. So I, I have not removed it yet, just for the fact that I wanted this board to have the draft as it was prior to us getting ready to potentially adopt it. So I would encourage the board probably to do the same thing that we did under limited scale, and we don't need to have a lot of that in there. So I can make that change if this board wishes, plus any other changes you see right off hand. But really, staff is just kind of looking for some direction from this board. We don't have to discuss this necessarily tonight, if you don't want to, but again, I just want to give you guys a heads up on what's, what's coming and what we need to do from the direction of the county commissioners.
What bearing on timing do we ask?
There is not. There is not unlimited. I mean, we want to get it done, obviously, we got a lot of other text amendments and things to do, but there's not a 30 day, 60 day timeline. We have a more term till the first of December and we can extend that if needed.
Okay, as long as we are doing our due diligence here.
Right.
Okay.
So I don't think anybody's probably looked at this for probably a year, and so it's probably something where we need to go back and reread it and get our mindset on, on this again and think, like I say, you know, there's been other counties that adopted commercial regulations, we might want to look at those, I can certainly try and provide those to this board.
Did Cedric County get theirs actually finalized?
I believe so, yeah, I believe so. I remember watching the, the video of that discussion, I think it was back in August.
I'd be interested in seeing those, if you can provide it for us.
I'll see if I can provide that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would, too.
So what's the wishes of this board? Do you want to start reviewing this document or would you like to take some time and come back to it next month? And my, I guess by the way I would, why I would probably do is the way, the way we've done it, the way we were doing it prior to December 23, we just start on paragraph by paragraph and work through our review. And me, myself, I need to get my head back around this and I want to review all the testimony that I had recorded previous in the, in the public hearings and those types of things and kind of put some notes together probably for next month. What, what's, what's the wishes of this board?
Do you think you could get the Cedric County thing to us between now and then?
Yes. I will work on that. I know my colleague in Douglas County, which is Lawrence, they developed their regulations and I do have access to a PowerPoint that she put together for my state planning organization. It might be interesting, there might be some things in there, some of the concerns that they, they looked at. I, I've read through it a little bit, it's been a while, but I, as I recall, you know, it was a very good PowerPoint. I missed the conference unfortunately, but I can do that and some of the videos and maybe some of the other things, try and summarize what, what other counties have done. But yeah, I can, I should be able to get that information to this.
Is there a public hearing between point A and point B?
No.
On this?
No. We had a public hearing.
We've already had a public hearing on this, so any amendments we make, we do not need another public hearing on it.
Yes.
I would, I would hope that's what you'd say.
Yeah, I can do it in paper or electronic or both or like the regs.
Electronic is fine for me.
Yeah.
Paper for me.
Did you say we have a case already for next month's meeting?
Yes, for Art Valley.
Yeah, limited scale.
It's a limited scale project, yes.
Well, I was just trying to think of working through this in one session. I don't know if that's too much of an expectation, but just the, the flow of it.
Just get the nuts and bolts done in one evening?
Yeah.
I think I, I, myself, I would like to see it done that quickly, too, kind of get a rough draft put together on one evening and then come back the following month with staff's write-ups, then we review it and potentially in a couple of months, we'd be done.
Yeah, like I say, you know, there's.
But if we have a, if we have a, another case already for next month that.
Do we, we just have one case?
Just the one.
No BZA.
No BZA.
So it would be, we, we could get to this prepared relatively quickly.
Just plan on a longer meeting, probably?
Yeah. What are your thoughts, guys?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Everybody okay with that, Gail?
Yeah.
You good? So come prepared next month.
Yeah.
And I guess that, if, if you want to communicate with the county commission that that's what, that's kind of our timeline, that they could see a final draft sometime in December.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty, pretty aggressive, but I think Garth is on the right track. I think if we review it next week.
Well, I didn't have a final timeline in mind, I was just thinking about sitting down and, you know, a work session.
Yep.
So we get the whole thing in our mind in one meeting.
Yes. I'll just let them know you're working, you're working on it.
And there's potential they're gonna have to extend it maybe by 30, 30, 60 days, something like that.
Yeah, it'll have to be. I think this board was close with that, with that draft, but there's been a lot of information between that draft, I mean, we've been through a public hearing and, and other counties have adopted, I'm sure you've read other things and heard other things that you may want to incorporate in there, so I'm not sure how much tweaking we need to do. It could be very little. Like I say, I think a lot of that would have to be with the developers agreement, that's one thing that I think it should mirror the limited scale at that point. So that'd be one big change. See, we was told to end it right after the public hearing. We didn't have any discussions after the public hearing. So you need to take all that information and add it to your thoughts. And I wanted to say something in case some of you wasn't here. When it comes to the development agreement, that it be taken out of this, there's many suggestions in here for a development agreement, they're very, very good. And that doesn't mean that these can't, that staff can't take those ideals to the board of county commissioners when a development agreement is being made. But suggestions should not be regulations, because they're not. So they shouldn't be in the regulations, separate to me.
Could they be included as a reference or an addendum or something, so, just so they're not lost?
Well, they shouldn't be lost because they should be given to the planner and he should have them and then use them when a development agreement is for suggestions to them. Yeah, we would have, we would have. We would have them. We would have them on, they wouldn't be incorporated into the regulations, but if, if a commercial, you know, project went through, that'd probably be the first document that we hand everybody is, here are suggestions for a future developers agreement, which will have to be signed. Then everybody has it, so yeah, it's not like.
And that's all done at the commission, county commission level.
It doesn't involve this board. And we did it with Wynn, but, you know, in retrospect, we maybe shouldn't have. And those aren't part of the regulation. Yeah. They're just not. Yeah, because it involves this board at all. Really. And stuff, and so it'd be county commissioner level, and so we would have that document or have those suggestions, if you will, made available to everybody. So we'd say, oh, okay, yeah, we need to be looking at these topics when we do a developers agreement.
I think if a project came through and you guys decide, well, here's a bunch of things I think they need to consider, then you give that to Mark and then we would give it to county commission for their, here, use it or don't use it. But it's not a part of the regulations.
Well, it makes sense not to have it be hardcoded in regulation because, you know, the landscape can vary this side of the project. There's a lot of variables that aren't going to be consistent, so.
Technology changes?
Yeah, there needs to be flexibility.
Exactly.
For the project. Agreed.
Well, this board can't dictate how the county commissioners create a developer agreement.
But that's just upside down.
And so when you make it part of the regulations, you're dictating to them what they need to do.
So if they mess that up, that's on them.
That's exactly.
Think about that.
Okay, so is everybody in agreement? We review this in detail next meeting? Okay.
If you got other things you'd like me to try and provide, certainly let me know.
Is there any other counties that have developed commercial regulations that you know of?
That I know.
Did Mac County, are they still?
I think they're still under moratorium. Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't, I'm not sure. I have to just go out and look and see. I can call some of my colleagues and see whether I have.
I sent you Russell County at the beginning of this, didn't I?
Yeah, I have several of them right now. When I was, say new, I'm thinking about maybe like in the last six months.
Yeah.
There might be some newer ones out there potentially. I will do that and then, like I say, certainly let me know if you see something else you'd like.
I think that's good. And we'll dive into every comma and period next month. Okay, are there any other business needs to be brought before this board? Staff?
Nope.
You good? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
We move to second and all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.